...for Thursday, for Tuesday, May ninth, two thousand seventeen. Our call to order this morning, invocation by the Reverend Ben Tippett. Pastor Tippett, if you'll come up, and pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Chip Lible, please stand, everybody.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for all of your many blessings. Thank you for the privilege and joy of serving you and to serve our fellow man. We ask you now to bless these commissioners and guide them in their deliberations today as they seek to do your will for our county. We pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, before you, we have an approval of the minutes for April tenth, two thousand seventeen, special workshop, April tenth, two thousand seventeen, joint meeting in City of Palaca, April seventeenth, joint meeting with Lachua County, that's corrected, April eighteenth, workshop, April twentieth, emergency meeting, April twenty-fourth, joint meeting with Marion County, April twenty-fifth. We've been kind of busy, if you can see. Commissioners, the chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Our next item of business is our proclamation for Drug Court Month. And Judge Morris, if you'll meet Vice Chairman Goddard at the podium, he will be reading. And you got other people you want to bring down? We can load it up.
Well, I'll let them talk in a few minutes. They like their time, so.
Whereas the drug courts, other treatment courts have served over 1.4 million individuals, and whereas they are now recognized as the most successful criminal justice intervention in our nation's history, and whereas they save up to $27 for every $1 invested, and up to 13,000 for every individual they serve, and whereas 75% of treatment court graduates will never see another pair of handcuffs, and whereas treatment courts significantly improve substance abuse treatment outcomes, substantially reduce substance abuse and crime, and do so at less expense than any other criminal justice strategy, and whereas treatment courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health professionals in the fight against substance abuse and criminality, and whereas there are now over 3,000 drug courts and other treatment courts nationwide, and whereas drug courts and other treatment courts are the cornerstone of criminal justice reform sweeping the nation, and whereas treatment courts demonstrate that when one person rises out of substance abuse and crime, we all rise. And whereas the time has come to put a treatment court within reach of every eligible person in need, whereas the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the successful work of the practitioners and participants of drug court programs to reduce the impact of drug abuse in our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Putnam Board of County Commissioners in meeting assembly on this ninth day of May, two thousand and seventeen, that the month of May, two thousand and seventeen, is hereby declared Drug Court Month in Putnam County, and all citizens are urged to recognize the significant contributions of drug courts and congratulate this year's drug courts graduates.
Okay, we need a motion for...
I make a motion that we accept this proclamation.
Second.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard, proper second by Commissioner Lible. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Congratulations. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Once again, it's my privilege to appear before y'all this morning in support of Drug Court, and I was just trying to figure out on the ride in how many times I had made the stand at this podium, I think this is number seven. So I have been involved with the Drug Court program since Judge Nichols retired. He began the Drug Court program here in two thousand and two. All of these statistics that you just heard in the proclamation, I mean if you really think about those, they're very important. You can't pick up a newspaper, you can't turn on a newscast, you can't do anything today without hearing something about an opioid epidemic in some area. And please do not put blinders on and think that it's not here too, because it is. We have that right here in Putnam County, whether it's a declared epidemic or not. We, and you know, we try to fight it along with Stuart Marchman, a lot of other treatment programs, and I think overall we do a real, really good job of addressing the issue. And I believe when we get to that point where we all begin to treat addiction as the illness that it is versus a criminal matter, we'll be able to be more effective. Right now, you know, the criminal factor is one of the areas where we can bring people into a program that can help them and change their lives. So I'm glad that we are able to do that. The money that this commission puts for Drug Court is very important, it's very vital, and I'm very happy that we have never had to, you know, beg the state, the county, or other people, agencies, for money to run the Drug Court here. Our county commission has always been extremely supportive of us and really believe that they get bang for their buck. And I always use this example, we spend somewhere between $8,000 and $10,000 per person who graduates from Drug Court. The last time I read, it takes about $30,000 to house an inmate for one year in the Florida prison system, because you're providing housing, clothing, food, dental care, medical care, anything they need, they've, you know, they've got it. These folks are, you know, working on their addiction issues, but they are also becoming productive citizens. We address the whole person, so we teach people how to budget, we help them get a job, we, you know, coach them how to maintain that job, and just how to become a productive citizen. And while they're in Drug Court, they perform a minimum of 140 hours of community service in our community. Most of them do a tremendous amount, more than 140 hours, but 140 hours is required in order to graduate from the program. So, you know, they're at the Soup Kitchen, they're at the Lee Conley, they're at the Ballpark, they're at the Azalea Festival, they're at the Blue Crab Festival, you know, just doing all kinds of work for this community. So it's really important, the work that they do for us in the community service. I want to take a moment just to introduce some of the Drug Court team that is here this morning. This is a team effort, I'm the leader of the team, but without participation from everybody, we couldn't make this work. We've got our Drug Court counselors, Mr. Jeff Kramer and Ms. Suzette Young. And I think, I think if you ask any Drug Court participant, they'll tell you that those two people are really the backbone of their recovery. They counsel with them, they run meetings, they do everything, and you know, our folks usually just fall in love with them. We have a new Drug Court coordinator this year, and Kimberly, I'd like for you to come up here so that I can introduce you. Kimberly worked with me in the court system for a long time as a dependency clerk, and when the job opening became available, she applied and I wholeheartedly supported her because I know what her skills are. She's got a great skill set and she brings a lot to Drug Court, and we're very happy to have her. But this is our new Drug Court coordinator, and her name is Kimberly Clark.
Good to meet you.
Thanks, Kimberly. I'm going to give... She's the keeper of our official documents as well. So a lot of people in the room behind me are, let me ask if I have, see if I have any other Drug Court team members here before I go on. I think they're probably in court, Judge Wolf is back. So, okay, so a lot of the people sitting in this room are people who are either graduates of Drug Court or who are participating in Drug Court. And I'm going to ask first that our past graduates stand so you can see how many of them are here this morning supporting this. And then I'm just going to ask the rest of my Drug Court participants to stand up. Those folks are working really hard on changing their life. And I always like, and the commission is always indulgent on letting some of them come forward and just tell you what they feel about Drug Court, and I think it is always good for you and for the public to hear what the tax dollars in this county are going for. So I'm going to open up the mic now for anybody that wants to come down and speak.
No, we just want to hear your story.
Hello, I'm Yashika Dukes.
You've got to speak into the microphone.
Oh, my name is Yashika Dukes. I graduated from Drug Court in September. It was, it's, it's, it's a very good program, and when I came in Drug Court, it was, I felt like I wouldn't be able to make it, but I overcame all my little fears that I had. I have a good counselor, she was a great counselor. And right now, I'm working, I'm with my kids, I have a Drug Court baby that I had while I was in Drug Court, and I just, my life is good right now.
Yeah.
And I'm still working and trying to be the best mom I can.
Well, happy mother's...
Very proud of you.
Stephanie Stanley, I'm a participant in Drug Court, and hopefully we'll be graduating soon. I just wanted to get up here and thank you guys and everybody who has a hand in Drug Court, because I've completely changed my life. A year and a half ago, before I entered this program, I never thought I would be sober. I never thought I would be, I have a full-time job, I have custody of my children back, and I'm six months pregnant with a clean baby. And I just want to thank you guys for not just looking down your nose at, at drug addicts and actually caring when we don't even care about ourselves. That's all. Thank you.
Good for you.
Thank you. We're not scary, I promise. Well, Commissioner Pickens might be scared.
Might be a little bit. I'm currently in Drug Court. I'm not perfect, but I am an absolutely changed woman. Because of Drug Court, I have found a relationship with my higher power again that's like no other. I have made so many changes that I could stand up here all day and tell you. I have a long way to go, I still have things in my life that, you know, I haven't gotten back because of my addiction, but because of this program, I have life again. I have a life that I never thought that I'd ever have again. You know, I've learned to love myself, most of all, love myself again, and realize that there is a better life outside of drugs, and because of Drug Court, that is the reason. And I want to thank you all for continuing to allow this program to save people's lives, because it's definitely saved mine.
Thank you. Thank you. Why don't you bring everybody up, and we'll get a big picture, and we'll stand up here, and you get in the middle of them.
You want us here or in front of the podium?
Yep, right up front here. Come on, Commissioners, tighten up.
Lot of babies, lot of babies. For no other reason but babies.
Line up that way. You do see a lot of babies in this group, and I'm happy to say that they're all drug-free babies, and that is, yes, that is always a very important thing in Drug Court.
Yeah, y'all got to get to know each other. Judge Morris, you're going to be in the middle, right up front.
I can get behind, I can get behind.
All right, everybody is. Hey, the left side's more heavily leaning. Get some over to the right side.
Larry, y'all come on this way, Steph, come on the other side.
All right, we got one participant. All right, everybody, smile.
Well, we're not smiling.
Oh, okay. Well, they can smile.
All right, good, everybody, smile. And one more time.
All right, congratulations, everybody.
Again, I just want to thank the commission for their continued support of Drug Court. We appreciate it, and we'll see you next year.
You know, Judge Morris, how can we not support? When we see the return on investment, how can we not support such a...
Well, I agree. I mean, I agree. If there's anything that the county can't question, that they're not getting their bang for the buck on, it's Drug Court.
And lives are being changed and turned around, and that helps our community.
It does. All of those folks are productive citizens, most of them have jobs or are seeking employment in this community, and they all have to work in this area or, you know, right around this area, but they're all living and working and being productive citizens now, and that's the most important thing.
Well, thank you. Thank you and your staff.
All right, thank you. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you. I love that part. Commissioner Pickens, you have a proclamation to read. Is Mary Garcia here today?
Yes.
There she is. Yep, come up. Commissioner Pickens will meet you at the podium for a proclamation about Tobacco-Free Florida Week.
We also have an audience, yeah, our SWAT representative, David Powell.
Okay, yeah, good deal.
He's got a special person with him, too.
We have our new SWAT coordinator with us as well. Students are in class testing.
We'll introduce her. Okay, Reverend.
Good morning. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2017-37, Tobacco-Free Florida Week. Whereas smoking cigarettes is a costly addiction and costs many smokers their health, their money, and their time with their family and friends, and whereas non-smokers can also relate to the emotional aspect, whether they are encouraging a loved one to quit or supporting someone going through their quit journey, and whereas Tobacco-Free Florida is a statewide campaign dedicated to saving money for individual tobacco users and the state as a whole while improving the health and well-being of Floridians, and whereas since its inception, the program has resulted in a significant decrease in smoking rates among both adults and teens in the state, leading to billions of dollars and countless lives saved, and whereas in 2015 alone, an estimated 3.2 billion in smoking-related healthcare cost was saved as a result of declines in adult smoking in Florida and the reduction in adult smoking rates. From 2007 to 2015, there resulted in approximately 17.7 billion in savings and cumulative smoking-related healthcare costs, and whereas Tobacco-Free Florida and the Department of Health, Putnam County educate tobacco users in Putnam County on what smoking costs them and encourage smokers to use Tobacco-Free Florida as a solution to quit smoking with Quit Your Way, and whereas the Florida Department of Health, Putnam County is committed to the goals and objectives of Tobacco-Free Florida Week through a variety of health activities and programs. Now therefore, the Putnam County County Commissioners hereby proclaim May seventh through thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, Tobacco-Free Florida Week, and Putnam County encourage all citizens to be aware of the dangers of Florida, of forms of tobacco, done, ordered, and adopted this day, the ninth of May, two thousand seventeen. And I make this motion, do we accept this proclamation?
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Pickens.
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Mary, you have the microphone.
Thank you. I'm going to pass it over to David to also share some information, but I wanted to present David Powell is our tobacco coordinator for our program manager for Putnam County, and with us is our brand-new SWAT coordinator, Shanice Isaac. And our students would love to have been here today, but they're testing today, so we will enjoy them some other time. My first day on the job, actually, four years ago, was being able to be in front of you to do a tobacco presentation, so it's really kind of brings me back to my first day on the job as well. So I appreciate that and all the support that the commission does for tobacco cessation and tobacco program in Putnam County, so we appreciate that, and certainly the support of our school district to allow us to come into the schools and be able to educate the young students to be able to take that message back to their families about the dangers of smoking. So, do you want to add something to that? I'll step back.
Sure, very quickly. Good morning, everybody. In 2006, the voters of Florida overwhelmingly approved a constitutional amendment that refunded the tobacco program here in Florida. In 2007, the Bureau of Tobacco-Free Florida came into existence. So we're celebrating our 10-year anniversary this year, and we've done some great things across the state, and I have to say that in Putnam County, we've done some wonderful things as well. Our smoking rates have gone down considerably for both adults and youth, and we've created an environment where we encourage smokers to quit. There's free NRT available for anybody who wants to quit, and classes are available online, at the hospital, by telephone, just about any way that you could possibly want. There is no reason for anybody who wants to try to quit smoking to not have a successful try.
Good, thank you. Yes, sir.
If I could, Mr. Powell, I have to bring out the point that we've had incredible leadership, youth leadership, over that decade you just mentioned lately with this young lady. Can you give us just kind of a historical perspective of just how strong we are on the state level when it comes to students working against tobacco?
Well, the Students Working Against Tobacco Program is near and dear to me. I've been involved since around 2000. When I came over here in 2007, I met a young man by the name of Corinne Golden, who definitely became involved and obsessed with this program, and devoted his middle and high school years to developing this program in the county, and ended up serving on our Youth Advocacy Board, which is the state-level board that advises the Department of Health and develops programs and activities for the youth to participate in. Since then, we've had two young ladies who served on that board, one as an alternate and one as a full-board member, Abria Campbell and Kayla Spengeman, who, by the way, currently works for us part-time and would normally be with us, but she had a flat tire on the way in. And we have a young lady who's currently serving on that Youth Advocacy Board now. She is Neela Patel, and she is a 10th grader out at QI Roberts.
Wow. Incredible. Yeah, thank you. Why don't you come up? We're going to get a picture. Charles and Shelley Johnson, will you please meet Commissioner Lible at the podium, please?
We have Bill Pratt in their place.
Okay, good deal, Mr. Pratt.
And we both, I'm very proud to read this proclamation every year. If you've ever ridden a motorcycle, you know it's, it's almost like you're invisible. You really have to drive defensive, don't you, Bill? With that being said, I'll read this. Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of citizens across the United States, and whereas motorcycles have increasingly become a common means of transportation because they are energy-efficient vehicles that reduce fuel consumption, road wear, and provide some measure of relief of traffic and parking congestion, and whereas the motorcycle is a compact, economical form of transportation that has become even more popular with the rising fuel cost, but one which requires proper training and expertise, good judgment, and knowledge of traffic laws, and whereas it is important that citizens be aware of motorcycles on the streets and highways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety and diligent driving in order to reduce the occurrence of injuries and fatalities, and whereas all drivers need to be aware that motorcycles should be regarded with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highway of this country, and whereas the safe operation of motorcycles requires the development of appropriate defensive driving habits in order to protect themselves and ensure the safety of all. And whereas Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month is one way to recognize and promote education and public awareness of the safe sharing of roadways with motorcyclists, keeping the safety of all in mind. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of Commissioners in this meeting assembled the ninth day of May, two thousand seventeen, that the month of May is hereby recognized as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Putnam County. With that being read, I offer a motion for this document to be put into the record.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. The ayes have it.
And I would like to offer this to you, Mr. Bill, to take back to your group, and if you've got some words, some of encouragement, now's the time.
All right, I'd like to thank you all for this. Sorry Shelley couldn't make it, her husband's having some medical issues. I'm the local safety director for A-BATE of Central Florida. A-BATE stands for American Bikers Aimed Towards Education. We are the only motorcycle group that employs a full-time lobbyist that fights for laws to make things safer on the roadways for people who ride motorcycles. Every day in Florida, someone gets killed or seriously hurt on a motorcycle. Just the other day in St. John's County, a man and his wife were out riding and got tangled up with a car and lost. The lady unfortunately passed away, and the man was, when I heard about it last night, was in the process of losing his leg. And the reason for the accident was, he wasn't seen, most likely because the driver of the car was texting or using the phone, which is the number-one cause of most accidents on the road. So it's our job to educate not only bikers, but drivers to watch out for us, because a lot of times, we could be in your blind spot, and we're, you know, we're a lot smaller than a car, and you're not going to see us. So, I mean, it takes one second of bad judgment to pick up that phone or answer that text message to destroy a family and to take a life. And we are dedicated to making sure that we try to eradicate that or do what we can to make things safer for bikers on the road. Thank you again for this.
Come on up, we're going to get our picture taken. Gentlemen, let's go down there. We're going to move to item six, our public comment. Again, you don't have to have, fill out a blue card if you wish to speak, that would be helpful, and we will take these in the order they came to me at today. We are going to try to stay within our three-minute timeframe, but if you go over, we're not going to electrify you or anything like that. Just we'll let you know that you're going over a little bit, and we'll try to ring you in. We do thank you for this time, and we do want to hear from you. So our first person today is Ms. Carolyn Swope, was going to come speak to us. Good morning.
Carolyn Swope, 137 O'Criss Drive in Interlochen. I just have a question for each of the commissioners, because there's a lot of rumors floating around. You have a chance to answer. Please, Mr., first of all, Commissioner Lible, please tell me how close Putnam County is to bankruptcy, and what are your thoughts on that?
I need you to address the questions to me. We're...
To everyone?
Through the chair. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
So can I ask each commissioner, it's a quick question?
Why don't you just ask your questions, and we'll answer those.
Okay, good enough. Just my question is, how close are we...
It's just a comment time, it's really not a question and answer, but go ahead and ask your state...
Okay, Steph, I just come to the horse's mouth here.
You're fine.
Please tell me how close Putnam County is to bankruptcy, and what are your plans to avoid it?
We are working on our budgets right now, and we have budget meetings that are available to the public, and we are working as hard as we can as a Board of County Commissioners with our budget director to get things moving in the right direction, and...
Are you allowed to say how close? I mean, I mean...
in the folks that watch this on TV, or they have conversations about what bankruptcy means. And used in this term, it is inaccurate, because in Florida, local governments are not allowed to deficit spend.
Right.
And so I think it's important that this message get out, that we are not near bankruptcy. We have a revenue-challenged year, and the budget that will be built next year will reflect those challenges. Bankruptcy used in terms of local government is not correct, because we have to then amend our budget and our spending to match what our revenues are projected that come in. We do try, and we are encouraged by the state to carry a small reserve, and because you never know when an emergency might come up that is outside of your normal budgeting process that you'll be able to handle. So, I wanted to make those comments, that when bankruptcy is used in this form, it's not correct. There are challenges to the revenue, which will then challenge our budget development as we move through the summer. And so that will require that decisions will have to be made on how you will expend those revenues in the coming fiscal year. But irregardless of what that revenue is, that doesn't indicate bankruptcy, it means that the revenue is challenged. And so I think it's important that as you and others are out in the community, that you have to share how this works. We are not bankrupt. We won't be bankrupt. We'll have challenges to meet the needs of the citizens, but using bankruptcy in this setting is really inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, our next speaker, Mrs. Faith Barkman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I gave you all an envelope last week about the hearing. My problem is, this equipment is not cheap, and it happened the night that Ted Yoho had his town hall meeting here. This place was packed. To me, you are supposed to go to the room back there, ask for the equipment, because sometimes people need to be shown how to use it. So this has never happened before, so maybe every once in a while, if you could announce at a meeting that there is hard equipment hearing, especially when you wanna have a big audience. A lot of people don't know that, but to let it lay out here, and it, somebody needs it, it's not fair. That's why I wrote the letter that I wrote to you all. Also, the school board has always been given this tape. Matter of fact, it was brought up at the last meeting. People on digital cable, we don't have cable, we just have an antenna. We could watch it off a Sunny Herald show. There's people all over this county that can't afford cable or get computer. So there's got to be a way, now that you have new people back there, that they can get these things to say Sunny Herald or the school board site, so we can watch it. Because we have an antenna. I don't pay cable anymore, and it's not fair to the people that can't get it. To me, it also comes back to you, the board, or the boss of everybody of this county. If you have somebody new sitting in a box back there, explain to them, or give them a book about the hard-hearing equipment and what has to be done to help people. Also, I've watched a lady two times try to come to the meeting in a scooter. It was very hard for her to get in back here. These things have to be handicap-accessible. It's under the American Disability Act, and I don't know what else to tell you, except to please make these people understand that they're getting a paycheck. Without all of us people paying our taxes, they wouldn't be getting that check. And so not to look down or look at the equipment that you have and take care of it, to me, is wrong. I don't know how much it costs, but I would imagine it's not very cheap. So if you guys could please just announce every once in a while, there is hard equipment hearing available, but they have to go back there and be shown how to use it, and that's all we're asking.
Thank you, Ms. Barkman. We'll make sure that they're, they notice that right up before the meetings from now on. Thank you.
Okay, I did give Tony a copy of the letter I sent you for public record. Thank you.
Just for your, the public's knowledge, we are working on new video equipment, and that has been done. Today's our first experiment with it, and we are moving those formats out to the different avenues that you suggested, so we are getting that, and we are trying to do better at it. And I believe after today, you'll see more and more getting out there in the airwaves. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else? If you did not fill out a blue card, but you wish to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
John Spells, John Spells, 106 Sister Lane. At the last meeting, I brought up a situation as far as the pickup of garbage, and from that time until this morning, I went and I checked, and that debris is still sitting along the side of the road on Moody, and as well out in the barden on John's Road. There's a whole lot of old Nelly boards, old computers, and water hoses piled up along the road. So I'm just wondering, you know, how do a person have to go about trying to get this stuff, you know, removed, because it's actually an eyesore to just ride by and look at that debris sitting along the road, which it is piled.
Mr. Spells, we just had the Green It Up, Clean It Up Weekend with 500 volunteers picking up garbage, so I'm assuming they didn't get to those two piles, is what you're saying? They're still there today?
They're still there since the last meet.
Mr. Gass? Thank you, okay. Thank you, Mr. Spells. We appreciate that very much, and we were serious about cleaning up the county, or we wouldn't have spent a whole Saturday doing it. Commissioner Pickens really enjoyed his time, didn't he?
Yes, I did. Probably the time of my wife.
All right, is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak to the commissioners? All right, seeing none, we're gonna close the public comment, and commissioners, go to the consent agenda. Are there any items you wish to pull this morning? I have none.
I have none.
Item F.
Item F, okay, and I have none. So Commissioner Pickens, item F, you have the floor, sir.
I just ask Press Tompkins to come up and just kinda give us a history on how we got to this situation with the White Oaks Trail, and hopefully what'll happen will benefit the people using that road, living in that area.
It's Press Tompkins, Public Works Director. It started long before my tenure, but it's been going on for quite a while. We did not own the White Oak Trail that came off of 17, getting back to two other roads that we did own. We went through an eminent domain procedure. Stacy, took, how many years did we go through that? A long time. And so several months ago, we finally took title to White Oak Trail. It was brought into the system as we normally do in this situation, as a Class II road, which is graded as requested. The other two roads are Class I roads, so what we're trying to do is make everything consistent, so we would grade all the roads at the same time when we're there, and not have a disjunction between two different, two roads in the same area. So all we're requesting now is that all the White Oak Trail be a Class I road, so it'll be graded consistently with the other two roads there.
Thank you. Commissioner Pickens, any other?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins.
Thank you.
All right, since there's no other items to be pulled, the chair will entertain a motion to move...
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Okay, items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. We have a proper motion by Commissioner Libel.
I'll second.
And we have a proper second by Commissioner Goddard. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. We'll take a second. Mr. Preston, you're up next. And thank you very much, Commissioners. Ed Preston, Northeast Florida Regional Planning Council. This is the SHIP triennial report to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. Mr. Preston, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Chairman and Board of County Commissioners. I am Ed Preston, 100 Festival Place Avenue in Jackson with the Northeast Florida Regional Council. On behalf of Brian Teepel, CEO of the Northeast Florida Regional Council, we bring to you today what's called a triennial report. The Florida Housing Finance Corporation sends Putnam County, that's the agency that sends the money for SHIP, sends Putnam County between a million and a million and a half dollars every three years for the purpose of affordable housing. The SHIP program was designed to spend those dollars, which are tax-stamped dollars, in the local private sector economy, real estate, banking, construction, in order to address affordable housing. Just like you would do if you were, say, investing in a close-family-friends business, you would want to hear every once in a while if maybe that person that you've loaned the money to could lower their monthly expenses. And so once every three years, Florida Housing and state law requires Putnam County to look at 11 possible incentives to make the whole program work better. The triennial report that I bring to you today and ask for you to accept is that once every three-year look about what we can do better for the next three years in the SHIP program. We looked at all 11 items that are required by state law, but here are the ones that the local Housing Advisory Committee recommended action on. Number one, we know that you don't have impact fees in place right now, that you're, that they're dormant, but when and if they come back, we would ask that new SHIP houses that would be subject to that impact fee not be subject to that impact fee. Second of all, to continue to require SHIP projects to be subject to water and sewer connection fees, we discussed that at quite some length. Number three, to continue to provide for accessory dwellings, it's already in your zoning code, and we wanna continue doing that. Number four, this is new, that the city of Palatka would encourage new SHIP construction on many of its small conforming lots. The next item is that the planning and development department director or his designee will be designated as a single point of contact for reviewing all proposed ordinances, notifying the Board of County Commissioners if there's one that will cause an increase in the cost of housing. And finally, to continue to locate SHIP development near settled communities and major transportation facilities. There's always just a little bit of tension between folks where money is concerned, and just like it is good for that family relative to take a look, it's good for us, too, every once in a while, to see what we can do to make things a little bit better, and that's what this report is. So I would urge your acceptance of that.
Thank you, Mr. Preston. Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Preston?
Good report.
Okay. Did you move that? I'm sorry.
Oh, I will. I just said, "Good report."
Okay, good report.
With that, I move approval.
All right, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Libel.
And I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to just recognize Mr. Preston. You've been in this job a lot of years, and we appreciate the effort, and you guiding our local board and doing everything you do in this community for people that really need this assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate it, sir. Okay, item nine on your agenda, page 77. Mr. Glent, Public Safety Coordinating Council Planning Committee. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
As I related to you last year when we initially applied for the Criminal Justice, Substance Abuse, and Mental Health reinvestment grant, we were going to be working through the Putnam County Public Safety Coordinating Council. In doing so, we have established a planning committee, and in front of you, you have the needs assessment, which was determined over several months' worth of work by this committee. As a brief summary, this particular program is the first part of a two-part series of grants. The first part here is to establish and develop a strategic plan that can be used to apply for the secondary grant, which would be an implementation. The grant is focused on reducing the impact of substance abuse and mental health on our criminal justice and juvenile justice system. We have focused on youth and on prevention. One of the aspects that came out very strongly in our needs assessment is the number of programs and opportunities that are available for substance abuse, but that we have a county-wide shortfall when it comes to identifying and intervening with mental health issues when it comes to our youth and criminal justice, juvenile justice systems. So that is going to be the focus for our strategic plan. Commissioner Larry Harvey is a member of this committee and has been wonderful in facilitating and participating, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have on the document you have in front of you.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any questions?
What do we have? I know the mental healths particularly, there's been changes to the Baker Acts, and we have additional capacity within the county. It's still not enough, is it?
It's still not enough, specifically when it comes to youth. One of the main hardships that comes with our youth is that we do not have a receiving facility or a treatment and triage unit currently in Putnam County, which means that our youth are being shipped out of county for every Baker Act, and that requires normally a minimum of two trips by our sheriff's office, one to take them out, and oftentimes a second to be able to take the parents out, because transportation is such an issue. When kids are being taken, they're usually going to Meridian in Gainesville, and then getting shipped up to their center in Lake City. So when we're having to take people that far out of county, we're taking sheriff's officers, deputies off the streets, it's incurring an additional cost. And unfortunately, because of the way the system is set up, there's no communication when the children come back with Stewart-Marchman Act, the school district, or provider, that anything has happened. They disappeared for a few days, they came back, and there's no requirement for follow-up treatment, no coordination at this stage. Stewart-Marchman Acts has been working to try to make stronger connections and working with the sheriff's office and other agencies to help bring that up, but right now, it's a bunch of separate entities taking action, and they're not coordinating with each other. We don't have a strong system in place, and what we find is recidivism is very high, especially when it comes to mental health issues. And the children who are in elementary school, middle school, who are acting out or are turning introverted, are having issues if they're not being identified, if they're not being evaluated and treated, the problems are just gonna continue to grow and develop. So we are looking at where we can intervene at the earliest stage, the earliest opportunity, through sequential intercept mapping, which is going to be looking at each location where law enforcement, criminal justice, juvenile justice has any contact with our youth, to determine what can we put in place to try to make ourselves more aware and to coordinate these systems so that youth can get the help that they need as early as possible.
Chris, what about the faith-based community? Any hope on that forefront?
There's always hope on that forefront.
I mean, I know we have some folks interested in it, but we can't, we still have a disconnect?
There's a disconnect, and mostly because it requires a coordinated system, and that's something that currently Florida is lacking in general, and Putnam County is right in the middle of that. There is no coordination between the different groups when it comes to mental health.
Seems like they would make a great coordinator, but...
This thing has gotten really complicated this year. We had to do a transportation plan recently. We're looking at a facility located in Putnam County. There's a lot going on with mental health right now that would be good for our citizens if they could all come together, so...
Absolutely. The proposal from Stewart-Marchman Act for a local crisis triage and transportation, it would be fantastic. It would eliminate some of the issues that we currently have with people coming in for Baker Acts and not being tagged for follow-up, also reduce the number of Baker Acts in general, because a lot of times, something can be taken down a notch, but it requires specialized training, it requires people who understand and have the ability to be able to work with them, and adequately determine whether or not they're actually a risk of harm to themselves or others, or if this is just an explosive situation that they couldn't handle at the time, and they just needed opportunity to be brought down. And if Stewart-Marchman Act is able to get the funding and move forward with that facility, that would be fantastic.
Good deal. What do you need from us today, just to accept this report?
Just to accept this report into record.
Okay. Commissioners, we need a motion to accept this report into record.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept this report.
All right, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. I'll see you this morning.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number 10, codes enforcement, fine reduction case 2013-0432, Denise...
because a lot of times, something can be taken down a notch, but it requires specialized training, it requires people who understand and have the ability to be able to work with them and adequately determine whether or not they're actually a risk of harm to themselves or others, or if this is just an explosive situation that they couldn't handle at the time and they just needed opportunity to be brought down. And if Stuart Marchman Act is able to get the funding and move forward with that facility, that would be fantastic.
Good deal. What do you need from us today, just to accept this report?
Just to accept this report into record.
Okay. Commissioners, we need a motion to accept this report into record.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept this report.
All right, we have proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. I'll see you this morning.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number 10, codes enforcement, fine reduction case 2013-0432, Denise Davis, 214 Phoenix Street. That's Suma. Ms. Davis, hang on just a minute. We're going to let Mr. Salmon go first and give us a briefing on it, and we'll call you up.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
This is a care premise. This issue, length of time to achieve compliance was three years, eight months. We don't have a lien on the property at this point in time. Ms. Davis has owned the property the whole time. We're recommending that the board accept $583 in lieu of the $24,925 fine if it's paid within six months. I've included photographs as Chip requested at the last meeting.
He gave a lot of them, too. Thank you.
Have you got any questions? Commissioners, any questions from Salmon?
There's no questions because your photographs were very compelling.
Okay. I believe we have Ms. Davis in the audience. Would you like to come up and speak to us, Ms. Davis?
My name is Denise Davis, and I own the property and trailer at 214 Phoenix Street. I had no idea that it was in the shape that it was in. My daughter had been living there, and she left, her and her husband left. I do have the address where they're living now that I could give you. I just want to thank you for the reduction that you've given me because I have no job. This is a gentleman cleaned it up. I'm trying to sell it to him, but I'm having trouble getting hold of the title. It was in my dad's name, so I'm still trying to get that done, but this is a gentleman that's cleaned it all up and hopefully moving in.
So what you're saying is as soon as you settle this account, then you'll be selling it to this gentleman here?
As soon as the title company can come up with a title number.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, Commissioners, from Mrs. Davis? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak against? Go ahead, Commissioner Lavelle, I'm sorry.
Just a big thank you. I mean, the pictures, you know, the old saying, worth a thousand words. Sir, you did a great job. It looks like a whole different property, and that's all we were after.
We hear that a lot, that people don't have any idea what's going on until they see it, and, you know, so don't be nervous. You're fine. You're amongst friends today, okay? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak about this? Okay, hearing none, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Move approval, staff recommendations.
Okay, we have proper motion by Commissioner Lavelle to accept staff recommendations.
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. All, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you. All right, Ms. Davis, your fine's been reduced. Work it out with them, and we appreciate you willing to buy it, so we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Glad we could help today. Okay.
We'll take a break.
Yes, we got to take a, actually, we have a 10 o'clock certain, so we're going to recess until 10 o'clock. Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
All right. We have an item number 10 on your agenda, fine reduction request case 2013, whoops, boom, planning development, public hearing, item A, R1702 zoning map amendment from C2 to C3, page 101 on your board packet. Mr. Brown, you have the floor, sir.
Mr. Chairman, or Mike Brown, Putnam County Planning and Development Services, R17-002, the zoning map amendment from C2 to C3. The applicant has requested a postponement till your next month meeting. He's also decided he's going to do a land use change, and we're going to bring those to you at the same time.
All right, so we don't have to take any action on it?
Not on that one, at this point.
All right, we're going to withdraw that on there. We're going to go to planning development, item B, HR17-01, adoption of eight sites to local register of historic places. Mr. Brown, you have the floor, sir.
Mr. Chairman and Commission, again, Mike Brown, Putnam County Planning and Development Services, HR17-001 is an application made by the Melrose Historic District Committee, and their application was to nominate eight properties to be included on the county's local register of historic places. In the original submittal, the eight items, or eight properties, were the Melrose Women's Club, the Trinity Episcopal Church, Mouseman House, the Minerva Tillman House, Bonnie Mount, the Whitehead Muir House, Vogabach, Rosewood Cottage, and Old Free Church. All eight of those sites are located within the adopted Melrose Historic District. Just a little background, Section 40403 of the Land Development Code establishes a local register of historic places as a means for identifying and classifying various sites, buildings, structures, and objects, and districts as historic and/or architecturally significant to Putnam County. As you most, some of you recall, you're on the board, on July 12th, 2016, the Board of County Commissioners adopted Resolution 2016-40, which created the Melrose Historic District As set forth in statutes and in that adoption ordinance or resolution, the Melrose Historic District Committee performs all the historic preservation-related duties otherwise set forth in the Land Development Code to be performed by the Zoning Board of Adjustments. And that, some of those responsibilities include the submitting of nominations for listing on the local register of properties within the Melrose Historic District. There are criteria for being listed in the local register. Each of the, each site to be included on that local register of historic places must possess the integrity of location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association with the district, and must meet one of the next four items. Must be associated with events that have made significant contribution to the local state or historic history. Must be associated with the lives of persons significant to local state or national history. Must embody the distinct characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction or represent the work of a master or possess high artistic values, or it must yield or may likely to yield information important to the history or history of the area. Staff analysis. Based on the information provided by the Melrose Historic District Committee, each of those nomin, of the eight nominating sites, nominated property, do meet the requirements or possess the integrity of location, design, setting, material, workmanship, which is the first test. In addition, all eight properties meet one of the other three requirements. Given that, staff had originally, and in your submittal, in the submittal, in the staff report, in the recommendation, staff had originally recommended, and it came out of the planning commission, that all eight sites be included in the nomination for approval. Subsequent to staff report going out to you, representatives of Trinity Episcopal Church came in and met with staff. They had some concerns, they would like to investigate more. They had requested staff, and staff is making that request to you, to amend staff's recommendation and the planning commission recommendation to remove Trinity Episcopal Church from inclusion in the nomination at this point. Representatives of the church indicated that they may come back, but they just wanted some more time. They also need to take it to the vestry before a final action could be, before they felt comfortable enough to include it. So I know it's a little out of the ordinary, but the timing was just such that staff would like to recommend, amend its recommendation to remove that one site, Trinity Episcopal Church, from the nomination of historic areas in the Melrose, or historic, the appropriate term is, the list of historic places for Melrose Historic District. Given that, staff's recommendation is approval of the nomination of the following to the county's local register of historic places. The Melrose Historic, Melrose Women's Club, the Minerva Tillman House, the Mouseman House, Bonnie Mount, Whitehead Muir House, Vogabach, Rosewood Cottage, and the Old Free Church. Do you have any questions of staff at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioners, any questions? I do, if you don't mind, Mr. Brown. Along those same lines of why you removed Trinity Episcopal, on page 135 of our packet, when it came out of the planning commission, paragraph two on that page, Mr. Hafner asked if the homeowners had agreed to be nominated and added to the register. Mr. Brown responded that they did not. He also let the commissioners know that the staff did not inform the property owners of the nominations and had had, and had any calls or letters come in from owners. Drop down to where Ernie Fortner asked if property owners could be added to the application or sign a form to show their consent to be nominated to the register. Mr. Brown stated that will be done in the future, but was not completed for this application. In my opinion, wouldn't it be, I mean, Trinity pulled out for whatever reasons they did, but are we sure the other ones really want to be in there? And I guess, hang on, no, 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 no. Hang on. Please sit down. We'll call you back. Yeah. Mr. Brown, can you elaborate on that?
Yes. I mean, a little background, I understand the confusion, and one of the problems is this is the first time, because the committee is brand-new, it's the first time that a committee in Putnam County Historic Committee has nominated anything to be on the local register. There was, I mean, staff will take the blame because we didn't have an application form. It's come clear that we will need one, and one's in development. This issue will never come up again, I promise you that. But we do have confirmation, and I believe that representatives from the committee will, will, will support this, that they have received written approval from, I believe, five of the parcels' owners. There are two of them, which they indicate that they have not heard from yet, I mean, and so, and those are the Minerva Tillman House and the Whitehead Muir House. The owners of there have not, have not provided the response affirming that they support this, or support inclusion on the list. Staff did send, I mean, we did send letters to each of the property owners. We did not, I heard back from a couple of them, they, subsequent to that memo going out, they called me and we discussed items, and then they, I didn't hear anything else. So I don't know, I can't tell you whether the, based on that conversation, they were supportive of the inclusion or not. They never came, they never responded further to me after I answered some of their questions. The only one that I heard specific negative was Trinity Episcopal Church. But given that the Minerva Tillman House, the owners of the Minerva Tillman House and the Whitehead Muir House have not responded, staff would not be, would have no objections if the committee wanted to withdraw those from the list also, I mean, or if the commission did.
Well, I was just moving in the direction of making sure that landowners wanted to be in historical place.
Right.
And that was my path, and it looked like that was the path of the planning commission at the same time. I do have a question to ask the attorney. We are in a quasi-judicial manner, right?
This would not be considered quasi-judicial. It is a public hearing, however.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Brown, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Brown before we go to for and against?
Mike, is there any, if we do approve this, the properties, I guess, that butt up against these particular houses or churches, any other effects on the property being developed or any changes?
To these specific ones that are on the list or adjacent ones?
Adjacent properties.
Adjacent ones, no. No. I mean, no more than what anybody else adjacent to any other property would have. So, I mean, there's, so the adjacent properties would not have any, would not be affected by any of these on the list.
Commissioner Lavelle.
Does the recently approved overlay take this geographical area into...
What overlay? I mean, we have, the historic district boundaries are adopted in the comprehensive plan, and all the, all, all these sites are included within, within those boundaries of that historic district.
Is there any language in that document that would help guide this?
From, I mean, the comp plan has general policies, the Land Development Code has specific policies for those properties that actually show up on the list, that are adopted onto the list. There are some, some leniencies for codes issues and bringing properties back up to code that are listed on there, and, which is beneficial to landowners, but there also on the other side is for significant changes to those properties that are listed. There is a appropriateness, question, or not question, but, give me a second, I want to look up the exact term that we, that's in the Land Development Code. It's...
What page are you on, Mr. Brown?
This is 109. A certificate of appropriateness, appropriateness needs to be obtained for making significant changes to those properties. And I think this is one of the issues and concerns that the Trinity Episcopal Church had. But that is, that is a requirement in the code, and it's a, it's in C on the very bottom on page 109 of your, where you discuss that. But it, that is a requirement for properties that seek made significant changes that are on the list.
Thank you.
Back to supporting the reason for developing an application form that staff is in the process of doing that will require in the future any property owners to sign on that they agree to have the property included.
Okay, good. Thank you. Commissioners, any further comments from Mr. Brown? All right, seeing none, we're going to go to the public, and we're going to hear from Historic Melrose, and we thank you for all the work you're doing out there. We know this has kind of been tedious and working through the process. If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Linda Kemp, 103 Grove Street, Melrose. Yes, it's been almost a year and a half since we had our first meeting, and our basic goal was to reconcile the Putnam County Register, which we realized only had two historic homes listed. And these homes that we picked are homes, are properties that are already on the State of Florida Historic Register. Once that happens, those nominations go to Washington, DC, and they are all already on the National Historic Register. And our application does not include any additional encumbrances on these properties that are already in there. We're just basically trying to have this, have them put on the Putnam County Historic
Stacia Rudolph, I'm the Secretary of the Melrose Historic District Committee. I reside at 652 State Road 26, Melrose. Just to give you a little bit of the process, as Linda said, we, our first act as the approved committee, what we wanted to do is reconcile the properties that were, are in the national, the state, in the Putnam County Historic District, but not on the register. There were a total of eight properties that were on the national state in the district, but not on the register. And we did send a communication to all those property owners and informed them, this is what we are doing because you're already on the national, blah, blah, blah. We didn't ask for a response, we just put that out there. So they did know that we were doing this. So then, Mike Brown crafted the act that you see in front of you, HR... So then, um, Mike Brown crafted the act that you see in front of you, H two zero zero one, or HR seventeen zero zero one. After the planning committee, where we made our presentation, they suggested strongly that we send a certified letter and ask for a response from each of these eight property owners. So, did that, got all my green postcards back. Uh, four of the property owners, one person owns two of the properties, so five gave us approvals with their initials on it. So those five are the ones Mike mentioned.
Ms. Rudolph, that'll have to be given to Tony for the record.
Oh, yeah. I'll, I'll give this to you.
All that information. And the certified stuff.
Yep. I'll give you all that. I'll make copies because it's my only copy. So anyway, uh, that, we got six responses, one negative. That was Father Tony of the Episcopal Church, and we'll still work with him. And the other four property owners, which really is five properties because Chuck Lowery owns two, sent us the approvals back. The two others, Bruce Waite and Sarah Wells, who's, uh, has a caretaker. We did get the postcards back, so we know that they got the letter. And we also know that they have had conversations with Mike Brown and the real estate agent in town. But they'd never, we had one conversation with, uh, Tisdale, who's the caretaker of the woman that's in the, um, nursing home. And we didn't hear back one way or the other. So as Mike said, if we feel, you know, that we can only get the five now, that's fine. I mean, it's taken us a year to do this. What's another, a couple more months? Uh, so we're cool with that. And the other thing is, there's, while we were in this process, there are actually a couple other landowners that want to be included. So we have this other group of people that want to be included. We didn't go for them yet because they maybe didn't meet all the criteria of national, state, and in the district, so we'll have to work on some of those. So we have no interest in doing things that somebody doesn't want us to do. What we want to do is make sure that we explain to everyone in Melrose, our goal is historic preservation and also reconciliation of the national, state, and county historic designations. So if anyone has any questions from the board, we can certainly help. And there's a couple more people behind us, so we can, you know, answer pretty much anything on the process.
Thank you, Ms. Rudolph. Um, Commissioners, any questions for these two?
No, just a comment. Congratulations. I think it's a great, great, uh, movement to get, and it's a missing link, obviously. It's pretty simple, but I, I do agree with you. And I'm glad there are other property owners that want to come in, but the, the two do have to be notified. I do feel strongly about that. Or they have to respond back to you. You did notify them. I think that's very important.
We have a saying, if you're complaining about us, you have to join the committee and do some work.
That's a good one.
Interesting. That's an interesting con-
Um, I just wanted to also add that, uh, Father Tony's concern, um, I spoke to him. The, the problem with-
Let's, we'll let Father Tony speak for himself on that one, okay?
Okay, well-
Because we, he might have more concerns or his diocese might, so let's, let's-
But just overall, there are more, his parcel has more than one-
Okay.
-building on it, so he was concerned about the others.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, um, is there anybody in the audience that want to speak for? Okay, hearing them, anybody want to speak in, against this project? All right, we're going to close our public meeting. Commissioners, deliberations.
I just spoke my mind on it. I would, uh, move approval on the five she spoke of. And the Minerva Tillman House and the Whitehead Muir House, um, I, I can't support as well as Trinity for the reasons that they stated. But I do, in the future, I will support them as soon as you get the response back. And hopefully more, the other landowners will come in too. This is a great movement. Um, I really admire what y'all are doing in Melrose.
Real good movement. Commissioner Goddard, any question?
No, I, I agree with the five.
Okay. Commissioner Pickens?
I agree with, uh, Commissioner Goddard and, and Lible, uh, with just the five until, you know, we get a response, you get a response from the other, uh, landowners.
And I agree too. And Mr. Brown, you've assured us in your statements that, uh, from going forward, you're going to create a document.
This will not happen again. I promise you that.
No, that's fine. I mean, it's, we're, we're working through the process and that's, that's no disparaging on anybody. Uh, so Commissioners, the chairman's open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the fact.
He made the motion already.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, he did?
Just need a second.
Thought he had.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Lible made the motion to accept the five properties with the exclusion of the Trinity, Marina Trinity Episcopal Church, Manera Tillman House, and Whitehead Merrill House. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a proper second by Commissioner Goddard. All in favor of this adoption to the local his, register of historic places signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you very much for all your hard work. We'll see you in the future then. Yep. Keep it up. Good. Thank you very much. Okay, appointments, item number twelve. Uh, we have a fair authority. Is anybody, is any commissioner is able to make an appointment today?
I will have one by the next meeting on that one.
Okay. Fishing Fund Advisory. We need one appointment. Pointies must reside in District Two.
I don't have anyone at this point.
Library Board.
Working on that one also.
Okay. Parks and Recreation, District One, has an appointment?
Uh, I'd like to, um, appoint, uh, Mike Peg.
Mike Peg?
Former schoolteacher, administrator, uh, longtime citizen of South Putnam to, uh, or Putnam County to serve on that board.
Good choice.
Mr. Pickens, what was that last name?
Peg.
Peg. Uh, Planning Commission, District Five. Public Safety, I'll be appointing those. Uh, Public Se- Coordinating Council Planning Committee, we have one appointment. We need a representative from areas homeless program, so be thinking of that. Zoning Board of Adjustments. Okay, wait a second. Waterways and Trails, we still waiting for two appointments. District's three, but we can't do anything with that right now. Okay. Zoning Board of Adjustments, one appointment at large. All right, so Commissioners, we have one ap-
We have one more. Um, there is an addition to the agenda for Value Adjustment Board, three appointments?
Oh, that's right. That's right. And right now, we currently have, and I've lost my piece of paper on that, we currently-
Commissioner Harvey and Lible and Tom Townsend. Um, and, Mr. Chairman, I would like to resign from that board for the point of getting the new commissioners involved so they see this process with an old commissioner.
I agree.
That would give us a new and a current serving one. And right now, we have our two with experience there, and I don't think that's wise.
Who do you recommend, sir?
I'll let either one of them speak for themselves. It's a good experience. It really is. And, um, you, you, we need to know it. As, to be a really good board, we need experience there.
I'll accept it if, if, uh-
You're familiar with it. You worked at a property appraiser and, um-
Yes.
You'd be a good choice. I'll support that.
Okay, so currently, the chairman has to serve on the board, on the Value Adjustment Board. And so, um, Commissioner Goddard has agreed to do it. Commissioner Pickens? Do you have any objections to that, or would you like to do it?
I'll second the motion.
There hasn't been a motion yet.
Actually, for correction, um, I, I don't think the chairman has to.
Okay.
It's just two members of, of the Board of County Commissioners that, that would be elected by you all, so it doesn't necessarily have to be the chairman.
Okay. It's a good time. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Man.
It's just that one of those is then the chairman of the Value Adjustment Board.
Right. There's some, uh, change in the air there. Our, our long-serving attorney, Mr. John Sproul, uh, passed away just, uh, ten days, two weeks ago. And, uh, we have a new, the new attorney is out of Orange Park, very experienced in this field. And I think it's a good time to, to blend everybody together.
I agree. Well, I'd be willing to serve, but unless, Commissioner Pickens, unless you want to serve?
I will do it. I mean, if you want, if you don't want to serve, I will be glad to do it.
But we need experience. Chairman Harvey.
Well, I'll stay on it this year and then, okay.
Either way, if you don't want to, I'll take it, but I think that one of these-
Okay, I'll stay on it. I don't, okay. All right, so we need a motion to move this forward?
Uh, you had one. You seconded it.
I'll make the motion. Recommend Buddy Goddard to serve on the Value Adjustment Board.
And?
And?
Chairman Harvey.
Chairman Harvey.
Okay. That, okay. We have a proper motion by Commissioner Pickens.
Second.
Proper second by Commissioner Lible, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. The ayes have it.
And do you have a, um, a citizen that you wish to, I think that we need one more from this board. Um, a citizen to be appointed. You may not be ready for that, but, um, there is one more appointment that we would need.
There is, and, um, I will check with Mr. Townsend, see if he is willing to continue serving. But I haven't done so yet, and I need to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, so Sarah, you got your marching orders then, and we can go ahead and schedule that meeting and, um, start moving that forward. Okay, uh, County, Acting County Administrator, Ms. Stacy Papel.
I have nothing.
Thank you. County Attorney, Mr. Manning.
Nothing further, other than to say, um, it was quite a sight seeing all the, uh, sailboats on Saturday morning, for the start of the mug race. It was, it was impressive.
They got out of here quick, too.
Oh, they did. They had some wind blowing and those cats especially, uh, once the start was on, they were gone.
I was the committee boat, and started the race, and eighty-four entrants started the race this year. It was the second worst weather I've seen in twenty-five years. And out of the eighty-four boats, forty-one did not complete. They either wrecked, sunk, or came home. It was a bad year. It really was. Glad to say my kids made it. They were forty-first out of forty-three boats, but they did get there. And they, they had, uh, they tore up a lot of equipment.
Well, you know, you would think that the wind would be your friend in that event, but I have seen where the wind didn't move them at all.
Well, it, it clock, it was coming out of the west. That would have been very friendly in a fast race, but it clocked to the north, the be northwest, and with that came heavy wave action. The river widens as you go to Jacksonville. And the time they got to Boston, where they had three-foot swells going to four-foot.
Wow.
And so it was the equivalent, you remember the little dolls you got at Christmas time that had sand in the bottom and you punch them and keep coming, that's what a sailboat does. And so they were, they got punched all day. They really did. And, uh, it really separated the sailors. It did. I saw people drop out that I didn't, I never thought would drop out of a mug race. They did this year.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Uh, Clerk of the Court, Tim Smith?
I have no items, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Comments. Mr. Lible, we'll start with you.
Uh, just, what a great Saturday in Putnam County with the, uh, Keep Putnam Beautiful cleanup, the Relay for Life, uh, fu- fundraiser and, and event. And the Lee Conley House had a fundraiser that was in conjunction with the Kentucky Derby, and it was really neat to see guys in seersucker suits and girls in the hats. And a few of them had had, had hats that they had worn to an actual derby. And I thought that was really neat. I saw Commissioner Pickens there, he and his wife, and I think they did real well. It was a nice event, but I'm going to congratulate all those groups and thank them for their effort.
I agree. Commissioner Goddard?
I'm all, I'm all thank everyone for being here, but, uh, it, it's amazing to me how many things go on every weekend around here. And, uh, it was a good feeling to see everybody out there cleaning up. Uh, we did a lot of trash. I talked to, uh, Commissioner Pickens. He picked a lot of trash up down on the other end. Uh, but it was just, it was a lot of fun. Uh, we had a struggle with the wind too. It kept blowing the fire out on our grill. But, uh, it was, it was quite an enjoyable weekend.
It was a gas grill. Mr. Chairman, if I could, I want to shout out to Joe Smith and Karen Smith, the operators of the Cheyenne Saloon. He won the first Putnam County resident to Jacksonville. And Joe has been, uh, trying this race for about ten years, and if you know the couple, they do a lot. They just raised a lot of money for the American Cancer Society. They are really movers and shakers in the world of charity work. But I couldn't think of anybody better to win the Colin McKenzie Award. And what that is, the first Putnam County resident, because I bet you Joe has won the last place award at least four times. It was really nice to see him go to the victory.
Thank you. Commissioner Pickens?
Thank you, Chairman Harvey. Uh, yeah, me and my wife, my wife and I, uh, participated in the Keep Putnam Beautiful, the South Putnam, uh, end cleanup. And, uh, it's amazing what gets thrown on the side of the, of the road. Um, so anyway, but there was a large group, uh, over twenty people, I believe, involved. Uh, Barbara Shoals coordinated it along with Sheila Tompkins. Uh, and we had, uh, Harry Banks Jr. and then Harry Banks Sr., their church, uh, participated, and Harry Banks brought some people from George Pacific. Uh, and also the Police Athletic League, uh, had some of their, uh, sponsors there. And some of the children, uh, some of their youth that participate in the boxing and other areas, uh, pick up garbage also. So, uh, it was a good event. And I also attended the Lee Conley, uh, event at the Women's Club. And, uh, there were some amazing hats, amazing food from the, uh, celebrity chefs, and it was a good time. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have one item, um, that I need your support or like to get your support on. We have a local Eagle Scout that has, um, his sponsor has requested a letter from, of support to us. And I'll read that, and if you will, uh, we could all sign it, we'll adopt it. "It's my pleasure to congratulate you on behalf of Putnam County Board of County Commissioners on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. This is to Cody Lee. You can take pride in having earned the highest award in scouting and having gained the skills and knowledge that will equip you to meet the opportunities ahead. Becoming an Eagle Scout is an admirable accomplishment. You are among a select few that have achieved this award, and we hereby applaud your extraordinary commitment to the principles of Boy Scouts of America. The lessons you've learned from scouting will serve you well throughout your life. Again, correct, congratulations and best wishes for your future endeavors." Commissioners, I'd like for a motion to be done so we can pass-
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Lible, we have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A proper second by Commissioner Goddard, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're going to all sign this letter and we'll let Tabitha send this back out to them. Thank you. Also, I want to say a, a big thank you, Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Hammonds is here. I, I had an opportunity to meet with a constituent the other day, Mr. Tom Linus, who asked me to do this publicly, if you wouldn't mind. Tom is, um, the president of New Day Builders and came to our Planning and Zoning Department. Tom's had a long history with planning and zoning. And let's just be honest, it wasn't always the best in his opinion. But he has been very well-treated by Sabrina, Loronda, and Don Beckham. And he wanted you to personally know that, and he wanted me to let everybody know in Putnam County that he has had problems in the past, but he was so well-taken care of that he will sing the praises of planning and development from now on. So thank you, Mr. Hammonds, for that. And Tom, I did what you asked. Okay. Last night was Liver and Onion Night. For those of you that don't know Liver and Onion Night and steaks, for those of you that go, just like I see in the audience. Uh, for seventeen years, we've cooked liver and onions to raise money for cancer awareness in Putnam County. And we've always raised about a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars for American Cancer Society. Last night, we included the Putnam First, and we split the profits up between the two. So it's something that we do annually. It started at our hunting camp years ago for men that, um, their wives wouldn't cook liver and onions. If you want to smell onions, come on up. Um, I did thirty pounds Sunday. You can still smell them on my hands. But, um, it was a great event, and like the other commissioners said, you know, I, I, I started off in Enlaken with the Green it Up, Clean it Up early in the morning. Commissioner Goddard came with his grill and we cooked sausages. I took those to the Relay for Life breakfast. Uh, crossing the bridge, I was hoping to see all the sailboats, and they were gone by the time I crossed the bridge.
They were out of here pretty fast.
Yeah, sometimes they sit up there and they wait for wind, but today they were gone. And then I came back through Florham, picked up a trailer load of garbage that people had picked up. It was just a really refreshing day to see all the people out and about in Putnam County. So again, if you think there's nothing to do, get elected, and you'll find out how much there is going on in Putnam County. Uh, Commissioners, if there's nothing else?
We, we should talk a little bit about the legislative session.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Well, there's not much talk about. The, uh, it was a session of, I, I'm not sure how to describe it, but most things didn't get approved. They really didn't. But Putnam County prevailed in a couple area. I think Dog Branch, if it survives, the veto acts will, uh, be a lot of money there for that. And, uh, the-
Fire station, East Palaca?
Yes, we did. We were awarded the money for the new fire station in East Palaca. But unfortunately, we didn't get our new animal shelter appropriation that we were asking for. But we have enough to move forward and do something there. And I, I'm going to ask for your commissioners' support in the coming months. Let's get that done.
Yeah.
And, um, get that embarrassment in our county behind us and get something out there we can work with. And we can ask again the next, next session, and we'll have something tangible to match with it. And, uh, hopefully we'll have some success there. But anyhow, uh, I guess we just cross our fingers until the governor, I think that's July one.
Right.
That he, um, vetoes or doesn't veto. And then, as it stands right now, we did pretty good, so I hope it stays.
I agree.
Unless anybody else has something to say towards it. It was an odd session.
All right. If nothing else, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.